School District Number 70 Governing Board to order. If you'll all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence. Mr. Lott, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and my God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you for those here, those here by Facebook and watching this. We appreciate you listening in today, watching in. First item, next item is Hybrid Learning Model. Mrs. Thompson.
President Townsend and members of the board, very excited to have Lisa Anderson, Associate Superintendent, talk a bit about the hybrid learning model that will be going into effect when students come back to in-person learning for the hybrid model approach. And she's worked very hard in her leadership role with the team, but we're super proud of the team that has done all the hard work. So Mrs. Anderson is here to introduce and to share a little bit about the work.
Thank you, Superintendent Thompson, Governing Board members. We have a group of highly respected teacher leaders representing all six of our high schools. This includes Monique Manifold at Cibola High School, Tim Rebeck at San Luis High School, Trish Ellsworth at Hela Ridge High School, Maralise Rivera at Yuma High School, Diego Moya at Vista High School, and Norm Champagne at Copa High School. This group has worked together to create the current distance learning schedule and the hybrid learning schedule. At last week's board work session, we heard from Cibola teacher Monique Manifold. Tonight, Norm Champagne, representing Copa High School, and Trish Ellsworth, representing Hela Ridge, are here to provide the teacher perspective on the hybrid learning schedule.
Welcome.
Hi.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Before we start, thank you, board, for your continued support of the students in our community. Tremendously appreciated. I had the pleasure to work with the instructor input group. The team had district-wide representation from all campuses with multiple meetings held and the goal of identifying the best possible return-to-school plan. The team had quality discussions with values identified, priorities set, and always with each student in mind. Some of the many things that were discussed, debated, deliberated over, and then compromised on included schedules. Should classes meet one day a week, two days a week, three days a week, on alternate weeks? The length of the class. Should classes be 30 minutes, 45 minutes, an hour, or a two-hour block? How many students? What percent did we want on class in any one time? A quarter of the student body? A third of the student body? Half the student body? This discussion led to the thoughts that fewer students on campus allows for more student-teacher interaction, but limits classroom interaction and collaboration with the students. Other areas of concern that were addressed included lunch. Lunch on campus versus off-campus. Online-only students. How do we continue to accommodate our online-only students who are not part of our Yuma Online Distance Academy? In summary, the problems prioritized, and problems were prioritized, and we a strong solution identified. The plan the district is implementing provides more time to build relationship with students, provides scheduled time for our distance-only students, provides instructors dedicated time to collaborate with their professional learning communities, and provides an opportunity for seniors who traditionally work afternoons to continue their employment. Ms. Ellsworth.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to share with you a little bit of the thoughts that we were using in the discussions that we had as to why each part of the plan exists. One of the values that we really embraced and was common among all teachers is the importance of a teacher-student relationship. And that in this distance model, that's been difficult. We miss our students. Man, we miss them. And they miss the opportunity of interacting with us and interacting with each other. In an online situation, it has its challenges. And so when we talked about the time in which we would get to see our students, we wanted to get as much as we can and maintain safety at the same time. And that's a juggling act. So we did consider those things. And in the last board meeting, Ms. Manifold spoke to you about teacher collaboration and the time that we've had. This has allowed our new teachers to be guided and supported. This has allowed our teachers who were novice at technology to be supported. It allows us in our PLCs to share ideas, to share strategies, but not just within our own PLCs, but campus-wide and even district-wide, the time to share that. As an example, a lot more teachers are using a forum called PairDeck that takes your regular average Google Slides slash PowerPoint and makes it interactive, provides kids an opportunity to respond and see everyone else's responses instantaneously. These kind of technologies and new ideas have been introduced to teachers who never even knew they were out there. And the time that we've had has allowed us to provide those things. This allows us to provide personalized learning, which is difficult in a live classroom and super difficult in an online forum. And the time that we've had, we've used to be able to do that. It prepares our kids for college and what they're going to interact with there. And we felt that in our program or in our schedule that we wanted to ensure that that still existed for our teachers and ultimately for our students. One of the last things that we also recognize is that we're going to be teaching to two different groups, that we're going to be teaching to kids who have the opportunity or availability to come to our campuses live for a couple of days a week and sit in the classroom and work with us and see us and interact with us and build those relationships that we've been wanting to build. But we also have a group of students who are not going to be able to come for a multitude of reasons, all of them very important in each family and each community. And we needed to be able to meet both of them and not leave one out. Or, you know, it was a difficult choice, and we talked about it for a long time. In this schedule, we do provide opportunities for our live kids, the kids that come on campus, to really have a chance to interact with us in class. But it also provides an opportunity for our online kids to have us signally or just singularly on a day where they have just our attention and just our time for each individual class. So when we put together this schedule, it was not just teachers in mind. It wasn't just the students that are coming to school or the students are online. It was everybody. And it was, we believe, the best we can offer in the situation that we're in and still maintain the quality of education that we believe our students are getting. Thank you for your time. And we appreciate all the support you guys have given us because this has been difficult. And without your support, it would have been impossible. Thank you.
We appreciate the time that you guys have put in on this. And we know this has been a difficult time. And I have to say, and I told Mrs. Thompson this in our meeting prior, I am so impressed at the quality of the teachers and the faculty that we have and the effort that you all are putting into this. And I'm very grateful. And I want you to know, I'm sure the rest of the board is. But from my standpoint as a board member, as a grandparent with two kids in high school, how grateful I am to you guys and the other teachers and how wonderful you're working on all of this.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're smiling under here.
Yeah, you're smiling. We're doing it right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darcy.
Thank you.
When Yuma Union High School District returns to in-person learning, we will open with a hybrid learning schedule. This is also referred to as blended learning. Blended learning combines in-person learning days with distance learning days. And in the context of schools reopening, the hybrid learning schedule will reduce the number of students on campus. For students and families who choose the hybrid learning schedule, students will be divided into two cohorts based on their last name. A through L will attend daily in-person, Mondays and Tuesdays, from 7:45 till 12:45. Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, those students with the last name of A through L will work independently on Canvas in the distance learning module. Students with the last names of M through Z will work independently on Canvas, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. And they will attend in-person instruction on Thursday and Friday from 7:45 till 12:45. 1:15 till 3 o'clock daily is set aside for teacher question-and-answer time with their students, avid tutoring, peer collaboration, and what you heard from the teachers today, the importance of teacher collaboration amongst each other, the colleague collaboration. Students and families who do not want to return to in-person learning can choose to stay on distance learning with Canvas only. Live instruction in Canvas will take place on Wednesdays from 7:45 to 12:45 for the distance learning students only. Families will receive additional information this evening and tomorrow via their Blackboard. Do I have any questions from the governing board?
Ms. Kravitz.
I would love to be able to see that schedule at the same time that I'm speaking with you. Sorry, I don't know what Eric did with it. But I'm curious as to the rationale behind shortening the student's learning opportunity day so that they're only actually on campus from 7:45 to 12:45? That's sort of part one of my question. And what's the rationale behind not using blocks like that was spoken about before?
So the shortened day allows for 45-minute classes and six-minute passing, but it allows for that afternoon time for individual or group student support with teachers and then the opportunity for students to work with each others and most importantly, teachers to work with each other, to plan as they're at. This is a new model for us with the hybrid learning schedule.
I question the amount of time that the teachers, that the students, I'm sorry. I question the amount of time that the students are going to be able to interact with. And then conversely, when, if a student is in Cohort A, but it's Thursday and they're online, do they still have access to the teachers in the afternoon? Or is it just the students that are in class?
Daily from 1:15 to 3 o'clock, all students have access to their teachers.
And then Wednesday, that you explained was for distance learning? I was a little confused about that.
So Wednesday, we have the same schedule, that daily class times. So first period being from 7:45 to 8:30. That will be similar to what's happening right now with the teacher being live for the students and the families that are choosing the online only. This is their opportunity to have the live instruction with the teacher on Wednesday.
I'm sorry, Lisa. So if a student has chosen to be hybrid, they have no access to their teacher from 7:45 till 12:45 on Wednesday?
Correct. It would have to be, yep, the afternoons. Correct.
Okay. And so what was the rationale behind not using block scheduling if we're trying to keep our cohort groups smaller?
So again, you heard from the teacher group. You heard from Monique last week and Mr. Champagne and Trish Ellsworth today. That was discussed. That takes the traditional class period from 53 minutes to 120 minutes. Planning for teachers and engaging students for 120 minutes was, it's not familiar to the teachers right now. And they wanted, they all agreed that this was the best to start out with the 45 instead of having the block time and not losing instructional time and engagement time with their students.
I absolutely appreciate that. I'm sure that just the fast pivoting that everybody's had to do has been incredible. And so I really appreciate having a graphic and being able to, and all the hard work that everybody's put into it. I'm just trying to really understand it. So I'm sorry if I seem a little slow. But I guess my last question would just be... Well, I'm going to reserve my question. I'm not going to have my next question. But thank you so much for the opportunity.
Yeah, I have a question. So as she says, it is a little confusing, all these shuffling around. Just one quick question. So the kids that are doing their online school, they will have access to a teacher any day throughout the week?
From 1:15 till 3 o'clock.
Okay. So from that time, even if they're at home, if they decide to go one day, doesn't matter what day, they can go and then meet with the teacher? Okay, that's... Yeah, and it is a little confusing, all the shuffling.
So if we're confused, imagine how confused the teachers have been trying to navigate and teach their students. So I think one thing we've learned is sometimes you just have to watch something and we may have to, we may have to make changes along the way.
Find tune as you go along.
But the beauty of this is, and I want to be very clear, very clear, this is not administrator-developed. The reason I have so much confidence in this is because I have way more than 100% confidence in the teachers in Yuma Union High School District. This was completely teacher-professional-developed. And there's one thing I've learned in a lot of years is let the practitioners do the developing and then we can always come back and make modifications. In an experience that nobody's ever had before, hundreds of hours of people's time who are the actual teaching professionals have gone into developing this schedule. And I had my own questions, and they've all been answered. And I feel very confident in the professional work that the teachers have done. But I also feel confident that if we have to come back for adjustments because the teachers see that, then we would do that.
No, I hear you. I know a little bit of fine tuning here and there you have to adjust as you go along. Is there any way to put it, like on a chart where...
It is. Actually, Eric has the graphic.
We have big graphics for every school. This is a combination of the schools, but we have big, for each, every school will have their own release.
And it is on YumaUnion.org. And information will be going out to families. Or it is, or it will be, I'm not sure if it's already been posted.
It is currently, but it's not as easy to find as it will be later.
Okay. We wanted to make sure that we presented to the board prior to publication.
Ms. Kravitz.
Thank you. So my question that I was struck at before was about the online option. I was under the impression before that if you turn Yoda, that there would not, you would not be supported by our local teachers. And then there was this hybrid model. Is there a third model that I just am not understanding?
So the two options with the hybrid learning. So we have distance learning happening right now.
Right.
There might be a student or family that is not ready to return to in-person, but may be down the road and continuing their instruction from Yuma Union Teachers on Canvas. They, that student can remain on Canvas when we return to hybrid. So a student can come to hybrid, can remain on Canvas, and/or if a family knows that they do, have no intention of returning to school, Yuma Online Distance Academy is available for the virtual instruction, the 100% online.
Yeah. I was going to say, Yoda is a complete separate, separate from the whole hybrid learning process.
Yes. No, I understand that. I just didn't realize that there are options for parents and families to choose to use distance learning with their homeschool teachers.
Yep.
So that is now being offered.
Providing that flexibility. Yep.
Okay, great.
So we don't, we've gone from either or to three different, three different options for families because truly, it's been a gradual learning process in general with the virus. And our community has done such a great job with reducing our numbers. And we look for that to continue. So why put limits when we still have these options? And again, the beauty of that, which again, I'm so proud of is, that was because the teachers wanted to keep that option open for families who still wanted that teacher in-person that they know, even if it's just virtually.
Okay. And then if your teaching concept A on Monday to Cohort A, as a teacher, are you teaching the same concept to Cohort B on Thursday? Or is it, how are the two cohorts getting the same material? I'm not following up.
The teacher group has that worked out for the teachers. And I've seen the model of that. And you are exactly right. So what is taught on Monday to the first group is taught on Thursday to the second group, the second cohort, M through Z.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And same content on Canvas for everybody.
Right. And are those possibly pre-recorded versions? Or are they...
Could be. Yep. Using all the different technology, the different tools that the teachers have been learning about through Canvas, through Google. Yep.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any others?
Any others? Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, moving on. Thank you for a great presentation. I appreciate that, Ms. Anderson. Item three, consideration to approve routine personnel. It is recommended that the governing board approve the personnel action for administrative-certificated and classified employees per the attached list of categories indicated. Is there any, is there a motion?
I move that we, the governing board, approve the personnel action for administrative-certificated and classified employees per the attached list of categories indicated.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Mellon, second by Mr. Lott, to, that the governing board approve the personnel action for administrative-certificated and classified employees per the attached list of categories indicated. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries to motion. Moving on. Discussion and possible action to approve the superintendent recommendation for in-person start date. It is action deemed appropriate by the governing board. Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, President Townsend and governing board. Recently, gosh, I can't even remember the date now, but we put forward as part of our resolution not to begin in-person hybrid learning before September 8th, dependent upon the metrics that Yuma County achieved. And I want to be clear that it's Yuma County achieving it together. I am very excited about the metrics that have been reported for Yuma County. We have all worked together, supporting the masks, supporting social distancing, and washing of our hands and all of the best practices recommended. Because of that, we've had, one week, the week of August 9th, the percent positivity was the only benchmark that we had not met. We came into what is referred to as the yellow zone in the 7% in some counties. Everybody's a little different, so that makes it exciting. But we did get to the 7%, but the next metric, the one that came out this morning, the week of August 16th, we were down to 2.8%. That is a huge accomplishment. And it only comes about because of the work that we all did together as a county. And it's very exciting. And it just shows that we can do this together. That being said, our, my recommendation for the start date is September 14th. I know that that's four days extra. It's past the 8th, and I recognize that. But I feel that with all of the work that needs to be done on another item we'll be, I'll be bringing to you in the next item, transportation schedules, student nutrition schedules, teachers having a little bit of grace to close out. I don't know if we all realize it, but this is the end of the six weeks. This is the end of a grading period on Friday. And for teachers to be able to end that six weeks and then see where kids are at and what they might need to do for redo, retake, makeup, the following six weeks or the following Monday. There are just many, many moving parts. And I am requesting a little bit of grace and to start on September 14th as my recommendation to the governing board.
Is there a motion before we begin discussion? Okay, then we'll have some discussion.
Okay, I'm just going to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I move that we, we accept the superintendent recommendation for in-person start date of 9/14. Second.
Motion made by Ms. Mellon, second by Mr. Lott, that we approve the recommendation of the superintendent to have the start date of September 14th. Is there any discussion? Because, boy, I have some.
I have some as well, but I will wait.
You know, and I appreciate everything Superintendent Thompson has said on the reasons why, the 14th. Several weeks ago, when we approved the resolution, we gave the date of September 8th. That was at least the second time we've moved the date. And the people I come in contact with, the parents that I've come in contact with are very anxious for their students to return to school. The students are very anxious to return to the classroom. The teachers, which I don't come in contact with a lot of teachers, but the teachers, they're anxious to get back in the classroom. I just, September 14th is a fine date. It's a wonderful date. It's probably somebody's birthday. But, you know, we have promised at different times, different dates. And we're moving the date again. Granted, it's only four days, four school days. But I just think that we've got a credibility issue on the line here if we continue to move the date. And it's like, huh, well, they moved it again. You know, are we going to, is this really a date that we're going to stick by? And so that's my two cents. Mrs. Thompson's heard a lot more.
At least four cents.
So anybody else? Ms. Kravitz, you had some things.
I do. I am so grateful for all the work that you're doing, Mrs. Thompson, for all the work, Mrs. Anderson, every single person in our district has done. And Mr. Townsend, I think that we have to keep on moving dates. And there's so many moving parts because it's a virus, that global health pandemic that we're dealing with. And we don't get to tell it what to do. Although we would love to tell it to go away. So I don't have a problem with the changing of the date. I don't have a, I don't really have a problem with any of it. I have some questions, which are, what are, like, how often can children and families change their mind? If they go for a week and the numbers skyrocket, let's say, or a month and the numbers skyrocket, they get scared, can they then pull their children back into the online learning portal? If the online learning portal, if they decide a month from now doesn't work and they want to go in the hybrid in-person model, can they do that? What are their restrictions? And then, lastly, how long are we talking about doing this for? Is it for the whole semester, the whole year? And actually, my last, last question is...
Promise.
How, I promise. Well, not really. That's a lie. How many, how many students are we allowing in a classroom? How many students are we allowing in a classroom?
So you'll have to tell me if I go out of order from your questions. The first two questions are yes and yes. And I can't remember if it was three or two. Our families, we are trying to provide the most flexibility on behalf of children and their families. I know that there are many people that are nervous about coming back. I know that many people have jobs that require their families to be in different situations. There are multiple generations living in many households. There's, you know, every single story is unique and no, there's no magic footprint for anybody to fit into. So one of, you know, one of our guiding principles is flexibility. In some cases, for us, it is very difficult to always manage and manage as quickly as some of our families would like. But we feel that flexibility and allowing for choice
that flexibility and allowing for choice is one of our key principles in this whole pandemic, where there's so much out of control. Families deserve to be able to pick what works for them and to try different things. I just want to keep them in Yuma Union High School District. Regardless of anything, on the other side of COVID, and there is another side, we want everyone with us, everyone possible. So we will, principals, schools there are committed to work with families in any type of transition. And for those families who need, need to know their answer right now today, and they don't care which one, they just want to pick, we have Yuma Online Distance Academy if they, if they're having a difficult time with the transition or the hybrid. So I feel like we've actually set the stage for quite a bit of flexibility. That being said, I don't know how long, and my statement again to, you know, anybody watching, the metrics depend on us. And if everybody goes out and they're naughty on Labor Day, and we have parties, and, you know, and everybody, you know, thinks that all the, you know, we made it to the metric, and now all the rules are off, because whatever, you don't believe in whatever, we may have to shut down our schools again. And I'm not going to say that that's not going to happen. I'm hopeful that we have all learned that we have to work together and manage and do the right work together. So if we want our schools to stay open, and that's not just Yuma Union, that's everyone, practice all the things that we have to practice, practice it together, because I can't tell you how long this is going to go. I can't tell you that in a month I might come back and say, we've had teachers come back and want to readjust the hybrid model. We need to do something a little bit differently. And that was just to be informing the board. We know that, as I know that as a superintendent, that I have the power to go ahead and change that hybrid model, but I always want you to be informed ahead of time. But that would be, again, going back to the professionals to advise me, and for me to continue to come to the table with them and my team to work together at what is best for all kids and the entire, entire district. I don't know if that answers all the questions, Ms. Kravitz. I kind of lost track. How many students per classroom? I don't know. We did not have everybody sign up, because quite frankly, you could sign up today and then tomorrow change your mind, and it's, it's not something trackable or doable for us. And also, if you said, you didn't want to come, and then you came on Wednesday, I don't want to tell your child to go home. I don't want to have to come, I didn't tell you you didn't sign up, and go get your kid and go home. We really want to be open and collaborative with every family. So we know that students will be wearing face coverings, teachers will be wearing face coverings, and we are going to have a certain percentage of half of the population that comes to an individual campus. And from there, we, we will do our best at the social distancing. The classrooms are set up, teachers will have a six-foot teaching zone, and students, I have complete confidence in our students, that they do know, if they want to be in school that badly, then they know what they need to do. And our kids are great. They're going to cooperate because they want to be with their teacher as well.
So how are you going to handle, or how is anybody going to handle a classroom where just randomly A through L in this one class of 40 kids, like, you know, 90% in the class, has that alphabet letter? Are we going to be able to shuffle them around, or...
Yes. We have, we have highly competent principals and administrative teams and teachers that have already pulled out all those scenarios and the what-ifs. And, you know, if we have to divide up and send some kids to different classrooms or different learning spaces, then that's what we're going to make happen. But again, we don't always know everything to expect, but we do have plans B, C, D, and E.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, the motion on the floor is to approve the governors, the governors, the superintendents, I gave you permission.
Thank you.
The superintendent's starting date of September 14th. Without any further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He did. He voted yes.
I told her I would. It's a vile taste. But I did. Okay. Next, item five, discussion and possible action to approve the superintendent recommendation, waivers for students returning to in-person learning. It is recommended the governing board approve that any student returning to in-person learning must have a waiver signed by parent and or guardian. Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, President Townsend. Governing board, I did supply you information previously. We have a waiver that will, that I would recommend we require from any student who will be attending the in-person learning model. It was developed by our insurance carrier, the trust, and it is a document that we already have in place and working. It's a different style. Extracurricular waiver is already being used in our athletic programs and extracurricular programs. Parents have been very cooperative and we're very thankful for that. But I believe that the waiver is the best course for us to attend to for Yuma Union High School District as a requirement to attend in-person learning.
Is there a motion?
I move that we, the governing board, approve that any student returning to in-person learning must have a waiver signed by parent or guardian.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Kravitz, second by Mr. Latta, that the governing board approve that any student returning to in-person learning must have a waiver signed by parent and or guardian. Is there any other discussion?
What do we do if they won't sign it?
The governing board passes this, or makes this motion, and it passes, it's a requirement. Yuma Union High School District offers two other options. Without a waiver, you would stay home and take your classes via Canvas, or you could choose to enroll in Yuma Online Distance Academy, or choose a different district.
Thank you for verbalizing.
And this will take a little time to get all those.
Yes. This is a, we're really excited, again. Shout out to YETC and our IT staff, all the work they've done. There will be things that are being able to send out to parents electronically. So you would have an electronic option, and we will also have the documents on the first day of school. It will also, with the governing board's permission tonight, it will be in the mail tomorrow to those families who don't work electronically with our schools. We have a few hundred folks that we've actually been educating in other ways. And so we were really hopeful that we can get it out to everyone and have it returned prior to the 14th.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is a call for executive session. ARS-38-431.87, discussions or consultations with designated representatives of the public body in order to consider its position and instruct its representatives regarding negotiations for the purchase, sell, or lease of real property. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
A second.
Motion made by Ms. Mellon, second by Ms. Kravitz, go into executive session. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will go into executive session. Are we going to retire to the other room?
No, we will stay in this room. And Ms. Kravitz, I believe, another link, right? No.